Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst, here. Bannister?
Here.
Carlstone?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Spore, here.
Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Spore? Bannister, Spore, any discussion? Kayla and favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Bannister?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, we have a couple oaths of office to do tonight for a couple new police officers. So I'm gonna come out front and join you. So if Officer Hunter Embrae could come and join me. We put it up there so you can just go ahead and read rather than trying to repeat after me. I think it'll probably go a little bit easier for you and me. How does that sound? You are taking the oath of office right now, so go ahead.
I, Hunter Embrae, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability discharge all the duties of the office of the police officer in the city of Pella, county of Marion, state of Iowa, and as of now and thereafter required by law.
Good job. Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome, Howard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is for you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, thank you. Now Victor Garcia, would you come forward? Welcome Victor.
Thank you.
And you can do the same thing, read it off there. So if you raise your red hand, you're now taking the oath of office to be a police officer in the city of Pella.
I, Victor Garcia, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of police officer in the city of Pella, county of Marion, state of Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations and welcome. And congratulations to the families. Good news is, we are now fully staffed in our police department. So we appreciate you guys choosing Pella to service as a community. We look forward to your service, so thank you. All right, this time we have a time for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address counsel regarding agenda items? Step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments for three minutes, please.
Excuse me, sir, I was up for a missed.
Oh, you're.
I'm Patty Bensary, 1117 Big Rock Park Road, and I'm the board chair of the community, Friends of the Pella Community Center. I'd like to say the Pella Community Center stands as a testament to the successful and progressive underpinnings of the thoughts Pella leaders such as Stu Kuiper had when they first combined art, culture, service, and welfare organizations under one roof. Consistent with the initial vision, the community center has provided a home for the Joan Kuiper-Farver Auditorium, the art gallery, Union Street Players, Crossroads, DOT Renewal Station, the Art Center, and a variety of other art and recreational programs over the years. Our community's continuing commitment to this early vision will continue to create the opportunity for Pella to capitalize on the benefits and the synergies of linking the creative arts and the community constituent needs as we continue to move forward with plans for a vibrant, multifunctional community center as a key piece in realizing the goals of providing meaningful amenities and enhancing solid economic development to continue to grow Pella into the future with this treasure from Pella's past and a resource for Pella's future at the heart of Pella. And thank you very much. It's all good.
Okay.
I'd always let ladies go first. Please pray with me. Father, we come to you acknowledging that you are sovereign, that you are good all the time. And Lord, we need to be reminded that this life is not about us, but about you and our service to our fellow men. We thank you, Lord, for putting us in this spot, this beautiful spot, pleasing spot, safe spot. We thank you for the council members here that have worked diligently to provide for that. Pray that you bless them, give them wisdom, knowledge, and good stewardship of our funds. And however, just pray for civil discourse, that we can exchange ideas pleasantly and freely, and that you would bless this time here together, Lord in Jesus' name, amen.
Anyone else?
H.W. Van Stryland, 516 Lincoln, former city council member. This is not the time to raise our tax levy rate or go to a maximum property tax. Reasons, inflation is, or was until recently, at a fourth decade high level. Even if it has slowed, everything at every store is extremely elevated. Many in our community are struggling to pay their bills. I've had comments from young couples, and not only the youthful, who are new homeowners or who plan to buy a home, who say that a couple of years ago they had money left at the end of the month. Now they're out of money before they get to the end of the month or before their pay period. Interest rates also continue to rise. It simply is not the better part of wisdom to raise taxes at this time. And where Corey Goodenow, who used to work with finances on our city staff, where he is now working as a lower level levy rate, I believe if I've checked correctly, than what it is in Pella. Many, many people in Pella in modest homes are struggling financially. And these are not those who have overextended their credit or are foolishly using their money. Not everyone in Pella earns big bucks. Remember, even if you do not raise the levy, taxes still go up as the assessed value goes up every year. Right now, a modest two-bedroom home, someone talked to me today, the assessed value from last year went up $25,000. That's $50,000 in a two-year period. Some of you up there, I suppose, can afford to pay higher taxes. However, many in our community will be hurting even more if you raise their taxes. Whom do you represent? Just the elite or those with average income and those who are really struggling? I rest my case. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we will be having a public hearing on the tax rate discussion. So if anybody else wants to talk about it, we will have another opportunity to do that. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion? Kayla and favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, now we will have the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024 maximum property tax dollars. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I'd like to refer you to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, tonight's public hearing is concerning the maximum property tax operating levy that the council could approve for 2024. That would be the fiscal year that would start on July 1st, 2023, and extend through June 30th, 2024. Now, as far as the maximum amount it is concerned, it's important to note that this hearing is simply, in regards to the maximum amount that could be levied, the council is not obligated to levy the maximum amount, simply to establish the highest threshold possible. Now, if approved tonight, the maximum operating levy would be at $10.30 for $1,000 of taxable valuations. That plus a projected debt service levy of nearly 33 cents for FY '24 would bring the total levy up to $10.70, which would be a 50 cent increase over the current fiscal year. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Currently, our levy, our total levy amount is at $10.20 on that. And that was actually the direction that city staff received from the city council during our budget work sessions last week. And that is what the levy rate will be presented for council's consideration on our public hearing on April 18th that actually approves the budget. So this will be the 22nd year that the city's operating tax levy will be at $10.20. So in summary, what this resolution simply does, approves the maximum amount, has little effect other than that. But the budget that will be presented on April 18th will be at $10.20 of taxable valuations. And that's the way it's been for the last 22 years in the city of Pella. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mandy, do we have any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay. Council comments?
I think you just need to emphasize that this is strictly a mandated thing, this 1070. We have no intention of going there.
Right. And to spring the word off that, it's just very important that everybody realizes we aren't raising your taxes. They're going to be at 1020 where they've always been. But 1070 is just procedural. So there's not a tax increase. Am I correct?
You are correct.
So few. I think everyone would be happy with that.
So as was already mentioned, obviously, the tax you pay is based on two things, the levy rate and the taxable value. We have nothing to do with the taxable value. We only control the levy rate. And I think most people got their property tax assessed rates today and the nail I did. But if I need Mike to explain how it actually works, we can do that. Okay, anything else, anyone? Have a question? Yeah, we have time now for public comment, yes.
Is the, who determines the rollback rate? Where's that come from?
That's the state of Iowa, and the rollback rate is determined, it's a formula. Under Iowa law, on a whole-class basis, residential property on a class basis can increase assessment statewide by 3% on a taxable basis. If you were to look at your assessed value that you receive today and actually your taxable value, your taxable value on your home is about 54% of the assessed value. The reason it is is because of decreases in the residential rollback. For the assessments that just came out today, we won't know the residential rollback until this November, but that's a state mandated formula. And once they have all the assessment information in, the most that they can increase on a statewide basis is 3%.
So there's two things you don't control, the rollback and the assessed value.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6569, entitled Resolution Approving Fiscal Year 2024 Maximum Property Tax Dollars. Mike, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Special event permit request for Vermeer's 75th anniversary, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor Dwork stated, this request comes to us this evening from Vermeer Corporation and specifically they're proposing a special event for their 75th anniversary that would be conducted on Thursday, July 13th through 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Now, if council were to approve of this permit, Vermeer Corporation is also asking for the closure of 250th Avenue, which is the red highlighted section on the big board up here, would also be closed as well. Now, I believe because the special event permit request, the reason why this is necessitated, Mandy, since the public is not invited, is because of the road closure, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, Mandy, do we have any additional slides on this? Very good. It is important to note, considering this item, that all private departments have reviewed the application. We are considering this evening. The fee and insurance certificate happened to receive, and city staff is recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Lord Brainerhorst, Carlstone, any discussion? Kayla and favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6570, entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Event Known as Vermeer's 75th Anniversary. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6571, entitled Resolution Accepting the Fiscal Year 2122 Annual Audit, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, what we're considering this evening is accepting the annual audit report. And when you talk about the annual audit report, that would be for the 12 months that ended on June 30th, 2022. And I'll give some very brief overview highlights of the very lengthy report. It is important to note that as far as the opinion was concerned, it was an unmodified opinion of the financial statements. Though for those of you that may be familiar with financial statements in the private side, I believe usually the terminology is unqualified, which means the auditors felt our financial statements that were presented weren't in accordance with governmental accounting standards as well as GAAP. As far as a few of the highlights from the audit report, it is important to note that the city's net position, if you can think of that as a traditional balance sheet, assets over liabilities, the net position in the city was just over $124 million. Now, as far as the income side of things, it's termed a little bit differently under government financial statements. The government activities, what we had was an increase of revenues over expenditures by 4.4 million. Business-type activities, those would be the city's utility funds. We had an increase in revenues over expenditures by over $493,000. Now, one of the key items that's always monitored very closely by our debt rating agencies is the city's general fund. As of June 30th, 2022, we had an unobligated fund balance of just over $4.6 million or working capital of right around 53% of annual expenditures. It is important to note, the credit rating agencies typically like to see the city's fund balance somewhere in the range of 40% to 50%. This is a little bit higher than what we have of that. But please also keep in mind, in the current year, we also incorporated the Pella Community Ambulance. So our expenditures in the general fund will be going up this year. So our percentage this time next year will be lower. No fault through the city's expenditures are going up, and we don't have an equally offsetting increase in fund balance, at least we're not forecasting at this point in time. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that does complete my presentation. And I'm looking for a member of our audit staff there. I don't believe we have a member of Van Monden and Associates tonight, but it is important to note that earlier today, we did email to the council the management letter for the audit report. So with that, that completes the staff presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Answerer, DeYoung, any discussion? I assume you all.
Does the bank approve? Of course. I was actually, I was a little bit struck by the, you know, we always look forward, like with our budget, and we spend so much time, but I looked at the governmental activities that we spent about $3 million on street activities in this last audit. And Neil Drive seems like so long ago, but it really wasn't that long ago, but we just spent everything. So that kind of struck me for what we have spent in this particular fiscal year.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of approving the audit, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Bannister?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
And Hopkins has just connected.
Okay, motion passed. Resolution number 6572, entitled Resolution Making Award Contract for 2022 Sidewalk Repair Project, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, what we're considering this evening with this resolution is awarding the 2022 sidewalk repair project to Dan Adel Concrete. It is important to note that council discussed this project on February 21st and directed staff to receive the bid letting for this project. Now, overall, when we talk about the sidewalk repair project, it's important for those viewing this material from a home and also in attendance, then generally the proposed sidewalk repairs that will be taking place here are the southwest quadrant of the city. So generally, it's south of Washington Street and west of Main Street or the green highlighted area up on the big board. Now, as far as the project is concerned, this project involves replacing nearly 385 sidewalk panels throughout the southwest portion of the city. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the contract is concerned, we did concede bids for the project, and Dan Adel Concrete was the little bidder up on the big board. Now, if council were to approve this contract, we have the total estimated cost of just under $95,000, I believe, for the project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the notice is concerned, in the project timeline, if council were to proceed with the project, we would notify the property owners of the estimated cost to repair their sidewalk panels in April this year. Contractor would likely start repairing the sidewalk panels in September of this year, or actually, they would actually complete the sidewalk panels, excuse me, by September 1st of this year. And as far as the assessment procedure, that's a separate procedure that we're bound by legislative standards. We would actually start that, well, the first public hearing would be on September 19th, where we would set the assessment amount for each property owner. Council would proceed at that time. We would send notices up to the property owners at the entailment in September, and they would be given 30 days to pay the invoice for the repaired sidewalks. If they did not pay the invoice at that time, then they would be assessed through the property taxes. Now, in accordance with state law, council may allow, and will review this during the month of September, council may allow assessments greater than $500 to be paid in ten annual installments as well. So please keep that in mind, that the assessment process is separate for, from the repair standpoint. And I do stand corrected, the total project amount, if council were to proceed with this, is, we believe, would be just $95,500 on this as well. It's also important to note that the bid letting did not include the 53 city-owned sidewalk panels. So if we proceed with the contractor doing that, we there will be a subsequent change order to simply adding in the city panels at a later date. So with that, Mr. Mayor, this resolution awards the annual sidewalk repair contract an amount, or the estimated cost, of $95,480. And with that, that completes the staff presentation this evening.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion?
Just a curious question, Danny, do you remember what the square footage price was the last time we did this or not? That's...
It seemed like eight or nine dollars. I'm contracted on projects and I've gotten six, seven dollars square foot. This tells me we might end up with ground sidewalks. That's just ridiculous. These numbers get crazy on hand.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, please say, we'll go, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6573, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Consent to Partial Assignment and Assumption of an Agreement for Private Development from RDP Holdings LLC to Trigen Trigen CFA LLC, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, we'd like to direct council's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, with this resolution, we do improve a partial assignment for the Prairie Ridge Commercial Development. So we do have a map of the subdivision plot that we have out here for Prairie Ridge Commercial Subdivision. Smash Park would be located up here, and I believe the Chick-fil-A lot that we're talking about tonight is located right over here. Now, specifically on the assignment, we would be transferring, under the terms of the development agreement, RDP Holdings over to Trigen CFA for the outlet Y, which is the location of Chick-fil-A. Now, this assignment is very similar to what we did for the Pella Entertainment Group for the Smash Park building as well, that was previously approved by council. Overall, in analyzing this assignment from city staff standpoint, city staff believes that this assignment will not increase the city risk as if you read through the assignment, RDP Holdings will still be obligating the bid, the default for the development. And equally important to note that this assignment has been reviewed by the city's legal counsel and city staff as recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Carlstone, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6574, entitled Resolution Approving Architectural and Engineering Service Agreement for the community center renovation project, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Dwork stated, what we're considering this evening is rewarding an engineering and architectural services contract for the planned community center renovation. What's being proposed, this group or the engineer that's being proposed this evening is the Schummer Group. Now, as far as the base project, when we talk about the renovation of the community center, it's important to note that we have, what the city has proposed is just repairing what needs to be repaired in the building. Equally important to note, when we talk about the community center, the Friends of the Community Center are actively trying to raise funds to enhance the scope of this project. So please keep this in mind, when we talk about the base project. The base project is really just replacing the mechanical, the electrical work, making structural repairs outside of the facility. The Friends are hoping to be in partnership with the city and will hopefully be able to raise additional funds to enhance the scope of this project. So let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Now, as far as the contract that we're considering this evening, we do have a line of services that will be performed by Schummer for this. As far as the fees are concerned, we believe after reviewing the fees, that they're very much in line with what we've seen in the industry. For the basic service fees, it's roughly 7.5% of construction cost, which we feel is reasonable considering the complexity of the budget. Now, based off the city's preliminary cost estimate for the project, which we felt the total cost would be right around $5.5 million. We are estimating at this time, based on the scope and the hard cost estimates that the city has of the $5.5 million project, that the engineering services fees would be right around $375,000. But equally important to note, that if the project's scope gets... And for the basic service fees, it's roughly 7.5% of construction cost, which we feel is reasonable considering the complexity of the budget. Now, based off the city's preliminary cost estimate for the project, which we felt the total cost would be right around $5.5 million, we are estimating at this time, based on the scope and the hard cost estimates that the city has of the $5.5 million project, that the engineering services fees would be right around $375,000. But equally important to note, that if the project scope gets enhanced, or if the cost estimates increase throughout the project, the engineering fees would be higher as well, because they're 7.5% of the construction cost. Now, finally, if council were to approve this item, the proposed funding source for this contract would be cash reserves from the city. And we would also like to mention, the city administration is recommending approval this evening for the contract.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Abut.
Support.
Brandon Horst, Ban Strum, any discussion?
Looks like we're having fireworks next year, or this year?
So, yes.
Did that cost go up or not?
Jeanette, would you like to answer that question, please?
We did increase the budget by 2,000 last year to help with those additional costs, and this is the same as we did last year.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Foes, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Anstrum?
Yes.
Karlstone?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6573, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Consent to Partial Assignment and Assumption of an Agreement for Private Development from RDP Holdings LLC to Trigen Trigen CFA LLC. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Once again, we'd like to direct council's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do, improve a partial assignment for the Prairie Ridge Commercial Development. So we do have a map of the subdivision plot that we have out here for Prairie Ridge Commercial Subdivision.